Time being 7:00 PM. John O'Keefe requests a special permit pursuant to the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning section 316, table 3-1, table of uses, use L5, to construct a detached one and a half story 30-foot by 35-foot residential garage with a footprint of 962 square feet. Subject property is located at 310 South Street, Foxborough, Massachusetts, in an R40 residential and agricultural district and is not in any restrictive overlay district. Mr. O'Keefe?
Hello.
And Mrs. O'Keefe?
Yes.
Nice to meet you.
Good to meet you.
Let me just sort of briefly explain how we operate because obviously we're really spread out.
Sure.
So, the board typically consists of five people. One of them, one of the members is not here yet, maybe not coming at all. David, Kim, and I are regular members. Lorraine is an associate member. All of us will participate, but only David, Kim, and I will be voting.
Okay.
In order to approve your application, the vote has to be unanimous. In other words, all three of us have to vote in favor of it. After you make your presentation, we ask questions. We'll allow for public comment, and that will include the gentleman who is observing us, stroking his mustache and chin. And then we'll close the public portion of the hearing and we'll make a decision and go from there.
Sounds good.
Okay? Go ahead.
Okay. So, we live at 310 South Street, about an acre and a quarter. Currently, we do not have a garage, and as we are a growing family of five right now with three young children, we are at a point now where we really could use some additional storage space for our family, you know, additional future needs. So, we're planning for a garage that is going to work for what we believe is our needs now, but also for the future. Hence, the reason why we're around over 900 square feet above the 625 square foot limit per, you know, by law 3.1. So, we've had a land surveyor come out. We have a set of plans that we've developed. From a static standpoint, I feel we're staying consistent with the look of our houses, which I know is one of the wants of the bylaws of zoning. It's going to be similar color scheme, probably a light gray door, but white siding, similar vinyl clapboard. Again, very similar look to what our current home feels. It's what we wanted to begin with, and it's consistent with what I believe the bylaws would ideally mandate or require. So, again, we've had a surveyor come out. We are within the side setback. Our neighbors, our butters here, the Crawls are behind us. If we're closest to their property from the side setback, we're about just over 15 feet right now, which I know is tight, but we're maintaining that 15-foot side setback. The location of the garage is kind of on a, I'll put someone in a postage stamp. We have our septic system that comes out with the leach field, so we want to maintain proper clearance from that, so we're not going to be paving. On top of that, as shown in the site plan, we also have constructed two years ago a playground, which we are really hoping not to move because that was a pretty good effort to construct that. So, we've kind of sized this off of the setback, keeping a little bit clear off the playground and then also maintaining what we think is a clear distance. And I actually spoke to, I believe the woman's name was Barbara, in Board of Health, about the septic system requirement, so I've talked to her as well. So, it's going to be similar layout to where our house is, perpendicular to the street, setback a little bit, so we don't think it's going to encroach too much on the overall look and feel of the piece of property. We love how our property flows. We have a large side yard on the opposite side, so this is kind of the location where we think it works the best on our, on our land.
So, I'm guessing you're probably about 60 feet from the, from the street, plus or minus?
It's actually probably, I would say it's probably going to be closer to 100.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah. I think that's everything I wanted to touch on.
So, to make sure I got my parents correct. As I look at your house from the street, and I'm trying to remember what South Street, just what's, you know, we're doing two South Streets tonight. But as I look at your house from the street, it looks to be like a driveway going way up?
That's us.
Okay, so that's the, now, is that driveway a right-of-way? Is that, who owns the?
They do. So, there's basically a 25-foot offset from center line of their driveway, which is shown here. We're 15 feet three right now off of that side setback.
Okay, so the line you show here is to the driveway?
That's actually the property line.
Okay, and that is?
The driveway would be, say, center line driveway would be about 25-foot in border of that.
Okay, no, that's fine.
About 50 feet.
So, we have this odd-shaped lot as an abutment.
Yeah.
That's really what it is. Okay, so I've got my parents right. Now, with your garage, would you put electricity out there, water?
Probably have a small sub-panel, no desire for water. I might do, we have, right now, we have oil for our main house. We have a small propane tank that fires a wood burning stove in our, propane-fed stove in our kitchen. I might do a small space heater of some sort out there, but nothing, no intent to, you know, convert it eventually into like some sort of in-law apartment. We, you know, we're going to have a small amount of storage up top. The way that the ridge line and the eaves are going to come down, it's only going to be about seven foot clear for about six feet wide before you really start to get into a knee-wall condition. So, it's really going to be storage. I mean, we have, we don't have an attic because the previous owners finished the third floor, which is great, but we don't have an attic. We don't really have any storage in our basement because half of our, half of our basement is actually a slab, you know, just a dirt slab, with crawl space called it. So, we're going to try to just use the second floor of that just as general storage.
And you figure you can put four cars in here or more than four cars? If it came down with cars.
What's that?
Four cars.
Just two.
Would you put four though, if you needed to?
Could I put four? No. No, that's not, I don't believe so.
All right, that's fine.
I think in your letter, you indicated that you do some, I don't know if it was woodworking or, but you have a workbench you're going to put?
Well, yeah, right now, I just, we wanted to build some place for additional, you know, storage of tools ideally, because right now, we just don't have this good, really practical spot. So, again, just projecting what we could use. I mean, right now, we, I mean, between just the two bikes we have, you know, like in-yard equipment, I mean, it's, it's, our shed's completely maxed out. We put half the stuff in our screened-in porch, which we ideally would like to not have to use as, you know, a secondary shed. So, we're trying to, as we started to think of the idea of having a garage, we wanted to make sure we were thinking long-term, and that brought us pretty quickly to say, okay, with three young kids, 625 is going to be enough for two cars certainly, but not too, too much more for general storage of other blind toys.
It's going to be on a concrete slab or?
Yeah, yeah, just four-foot frost walls with a concrete slab.
So, no anticipation of using this for commercial purposes?
No, not at all, no.
And no livable space, as you said?
Nope.
Just going to be storage?
Yeah, probably a small sub-panel just for general power, convenience power, and then, I guess, maybe, I haven't got too far down the plenty of that, just potentially some small space heater, maybe a propane-fed space heater if that's allowed, just to have something in the winter if need be.
And the plans are, the ones that you submitted?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Lorraine, any questions?
So, I drove by the property and saw there were some pegs in the ground with some flyers on. Is that approximately the location of where the?
Yeah, so we had the surveyor come out. I had him, you know, stake out the lot lines. We made sure, because I knew we were going to be pretty close to that side setback, so I wanted to guarantee he'd, you know, he may actually come out two times so that he could nail down that lot line. And then I had him just stake out two of the corners, just so we could get a better feel for where it's going to be landing on our property.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any comments? And just tell us your name and address?
Yep, Chris and Lori Kral. We live?
I'm sorry, Chris and Lori?
Kral, K-R-A-L. And we live directly adjacent to the O'Keefes, and so basically, we support this project. We don't have any concerns or comments. I've known Sean and Steph a long time, and I think it's great for them, and I hope it happens.
So, there are three?
There wasn't three.
We're 310.
310, you're at?
312.
I'm sorry, 312?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Bill Harris?
We're muted.
Can you hear us, Bill? We can't hear you.
I can hear him.
You have to unmute.
Sign language?
Oh, Jack, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. You were better before, but we can hear you now.
No, now you're on again.
Any questions?
Oh, you're muted again.
Push the button again.
You have to unmute.
Push to talk.
Is it him who's on mute or?
We can't hear you.
Yeah.
Can I take a look?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, now we can hear you, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. No, I have no concerns. It seems straightforward, a large one-and-a-half-story garage. I'm fine. You already, you addressed the closeness, proximity to the, the property line on the right side, so you've got three inches to spare, but it seems the applicant knows he's got to stake that out. I'm sure the board doesn't want to come back to four variants, so you're good to go.
Okay, good.
I'm all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, why don't we close the public portion of the hearing? I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure that when I look at this?
Yep.
Are those garage doors are facing the street?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, our driveway, we're basically just right now a driveway.
There was something about it when I was looking at it before, when I was down there, I wasn't much clearer to be where we were.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably because that driveway on the right kind of threw me a little bit.
Sure.
Yeah, so.
So, actually, this, this portion where the door is would be closer to your neighbor's property?
Correct. That's the way it would face.
That's the thing that you're?
Yep, yep. Yeah, we also moved where that door was so that we wouldn't have as much of a need for a widespread of asphalt to driveway to connect to our existing driveway. If we had one, you know, if we had mirrored that, the driveway would have, there would have been a much larger patch of drive, you know, asphalt required to kind of connect the two.
Yep, okay. Any other questions?
No, all good.
Want to close the public portion? Make a motion?
I move to close the public portion.
A second.
Okay, all in favor? This is straightforward. This is pretty simple.
Yep.
We have a lot of conditions, but that are standard for garages.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm fine with this. And the reason, no, as you explained, you're going to hear all these standard conditions, and a lot of it has to do with, we've had instances way back in the past where these nice oversized garages, the next thing you know, it's a business.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, these will?
Yeah, no three-phase power. I remember I was talking to Diana, yeah, three-phase power and, yeah.
Yeah.
Converting to an in-law apartment, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Do you want to make a motion? I'll read the conditions and then?
Yeah, I make the motion that we approve this special use permit. Subject two, Bonnie's conditions.
Okay. Number one, the garage is a detached one-and-a-half-story structure, dimensions that can't exceed 30 feet in width, 35 feet in length, and a footprint of 962 square feet. Construction is in accordance with these plans, and we'll be attaching them to the decision. Three, the garage is situated on the property as set forth in the plot plan. The garage shall be, number four, the garage shall be constructed of exterior materials that are of a comparable type, architectural design and color is exterior materials with which the residence is constructed. Five, the garage is used solely to garage motor vehicles to store personal property. Six, the garage shall not be used for any business or commercial activities, and shall not be used for residential dwelling purposes. Seven, running water to and within the garage is prohibited. Eight, electricity service within the garage is restricted to single-phase electric service. Nine, spotlights on the garage and pole lights on the subject property that lead to or are outside the garage are prohibited. And 10, storage of combustible or hazardous materials within or outside the garage, including gasoline and used motor vehicle oil in excess of five gallons, is prohibited. Anything else?
Second the motion?
Okay, all in favor? So, what we'll do is draft the decision and sign it at some point, hopefully within the next week or two.
Okay.
And at that point, Diana will file with the town clerk. You'll receive notice. There's a 20-day appeal period. Once the appeal period runs, you'll need to file a copy of the decision with the registry of deeds up in Dedham. And at that point, you're good to go to the building commissioner and obtain your building permit.
Awesome. And the 20 days is business, business days, 20 business days?
It's 20 calendar days.
Calendar days, okay. Excellent.
Holiday, like if the 4th of July runs into it, that doesn't count.
Okay.
That's a count weekend.
Okay, all right. Very good. Well, thank you. Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, the time being 7:10 PM. Cassidy, is it Bedessa or Bedisa?
Bedessa.
Bedessa requests a special permit pursuant to the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning, section 316, table 3-1, table of uses, use L5 to construct a detached 24-by-6-foot by 39.5-foot residential garage with a footprint of 971.7 square feet. The subject property is located at 335 South Street, Foxborough, Massachusetts, in an R40 residential and agricultural district and is not in any restrictive overlay district. There was an error in the hearing notice. You are in the Zone 2 Water Resource Protection District, Protection Overlay District. Your, your application was correct. It's just a hearing notice that was incorrect.
Okay.
Go ahead. You ready?
Yes, I am.
Well, actually, let me, let me just explain like I did with the last application. Again, we're a board of five. One of our members is not here. Kim, David, and I are the regular members. Lorraine is an associate member. We all participate, but only Kim, David, and I can, can vote on the matter. In order to approve the application, our vote has to be unanimous.
Okay.
Okay? Proceed.
My name is Cassidy Bedessa. This is my wife Laura. We live on 335 South Street. We bought the property from her father in May of 2019. We've done significant work on it, brand-new siding on the house, brand-new roof. So, at this point, we're getting ready to build a garage 24 by 40. It is a multifamily home right now, so we do have tenants. So, the reason for the, the special permit and the big size is we want to satisfy the needs of our two family. I have a riding mower. I have a snow blower, things along that nature. I'd like to get out of the elements right now. They're kind of sitting in my yard. We obviously want someone to put our cars. It will be, because it's 24 feet wide from South Street, it'll be parallel to South Street, so it will be the standard two-car garage facade that you see from the street. It will match the house, so we'll have the blue siding that the house has right now. One of the reasons why we're doing this is right now, we do have a 13-by-21 shed, garage, whatever you want to call it. I think it was a garage, one-car garage that got turned into the shed, that will be getting demolished upon approval of this permit. It'll allow us to open up our yard a little bit more for our young family. We have a family of four. So, that way, I don't, it's going to set up, it's going to be set a little bit more off to the side, which will allow us to open up that front yard for ourselves. It is a roughly, it's with the garage that we're demolishing right now, and it's right around a standard 625, plus the garage that we're demolishing, and we feel that it's consistent with some of the other larger garages in the area.
So, you're going to demolish the shed?
Correct.
That's on the plan.
Yes.
Is the garage going to be basically where the shed is or?
It's going to be the left. I do have pictures.
Yeah.
I, I do have three copies, actually, so I don't know if I'm allowed to pass them around with everything that's going on or not, or, but.
Yeah, you want to start?
I have three different, I have a lot of them.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's hard to know. It's hard to know what to do.
Well, it's new to us, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. No problem.
Yep, I remember that shed, thinking, what's this all about?
Time to get rid of it.
So, when I'm driving down South Street?
Yes.
Heading towards Plainville?
Yes.
Okay, I basically passed your house, and then there's a paved area just past it. Is that your property, that paved area?
Um, past the house?
That, I think that's our driveway that you're referring to.
Yeah, is that essentially this area?
Yes, that's our driveway right now.
Okay. And the garage will be where in relation?
Right to the left of that garage. If you look closely, you can see some of the stakes in the, on the second page, page three.
Yep.
Page five, you can see some of the corners.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the pictures show it. It will be to the left of that garage. I'm sorry, the shed, garage, whatever you want to call it. And then the plan shows it in a little bit better detail where it will be in comparison to that as well. It will abut directly to the driveway.
Mm-hmm.
And that, you know, we will have electricity run out there. It will not be a heated garage. There won't be any plumbing out there, anything of that nature. And we did, a couple of weeks ago, we did sit in front of the conservation committee, and we got approved to put it where we wanted to.
You're all through?
Yes, we're all, we got approved. We got a negative on the RFD with them.
Diana, what technically is the conservation?
They have to do a determination. So, if you get a negative determination, that's a good thing. That means you're done with them.
Okay.
If they've got a positive determination, they would have had to do a whole notice of intent.
Okay.
Big public hearing process. So, conservation was fine with it, where it is and everything. You know, they said if anything were to change, they wanted further away from the conservation side, but they were fine where it was.
Okay. Now, the assessors' records say that you're co-owners with Sean and Patricia Murphy. Is that still correct or?
No, in May of 2019, we bought it from them.
Okay, and those are your parents?
Yes.
Okay.
And you have a tenant, and the tenant, or occupies the second floor or?
Correct. Yes.
Just to get a feel for, I mean, like how many bedrooms is that or, you know?
The apartment is one bedroom, one bath, and our unit is four bedroom, two bath.
Okay, so it's a small apartment. It doesn't get much smaller than that, right? One bedroom, one bath.
And will the garage hold how many vehicles?
Four.
Will it hold?
We both, she has a bigger SUV. I have a full-size truck, so, I mean, those are averaged around 18 to 20-foot in length, so, and my tenant does have a truck as well, and his girlfriend has a SUV. So, it'll fit four comfortably without banging the doors off of each other, you know what I mean?
Okay. So, it'll be for you as well as your tenant?
Correct.
Okay.
Just with the one door, though, correct?
Correct, a 16-by-8 overhead double door.
You said no plumbing, I heard that.
Yeah. Well, we'll say no plumbing anyhow, but, yeah.
No, but I'm getting the sense, Bonnie, people are well briefed before they come here with these garages because they know what plumbing.
Right.
Plumbing is kind of the, one of the kill pills, so.
Lorraine, any questions?
No.
Okay.
Did you talk to your neighbors about this? Have any of them approached you about it?
Well, the neighbors across the street only moved in probably six months ago. They were at 332. They just did that big addition and stuff like that. So, with Corona, we really haven't seen them.
No, that's true.
Neighbors left to right.
That would make it difficult, huh? Getting on a neighborhood of you.
Yeah. We've, we've talked on Facebook a couple of times, but we never got to meet face-to-face, unfortunately.
Any other questions?
So, it sounds as if there will be no living space in?
Not at all, no.
In the building, and no, this wouldn't be used for a commercial space either?
No, no.
Okay, great. And what did you say about driveway? Will, will you have a new section of driveway that leads all the way there?
No, it's going to abut the driveway.
It'll abut it, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Bill, any questions?
No, Mr. Chairman. I went down, checked the property, files. It meets all the zoning regulations, so I have no concerns.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions from anyone?
I'm over, close to him?
Yep.
Second?
All in favor? Again, this is pretty straightforward. You know, we do have conditions that we'll impose that, that are consistent with some of the questions, some of the things that you've asked, but I don't think there's any questions any of us have as to what he's doing.
No, I'm good with the standard conditions that we do on oversized garages.
I'm going to let Kim read.
Yes, I will read them.
I'm tired of waiting my glasses off.
I know, it's hard with glasses.
I always tell people that the spirit of these conditions is that we don't like to see a garage be converted to a business.
Or another?
Or something else, another house.
Yeah.
So, you're going to hear a list of them, and you're going to, that's, think about, they would be obstacles if you were going to try to go that way, which we're sure you're not.
So, once you make the motion, let Kim read the conditions, and we'll second it.
I move we grant the special use permit per the conditions that Bonnie will enumerate.
Oh, Kim will enumerate.
Oh, Kim, oh, Kim's turn, okay.
We're switching it up tonight. The proposed garage shall be a detached one-and-a-half-story structure with dimensions that cannot exceed 24.6 feet in width, 39.5 feet in length, and a footprint of 971.7 square feet. Number two, construction of the proposed garage shall be in accordance with the proposed garage plans. Number three, the proposed garage shall be situated on the subject property as set forth in the plot plan. Number four, the proposed garage shall be constructed of exterior materials that are of a comparable type, architectural design, and color as the exterior materials with which the residence is constructed. Number five, the proposed garage shall be used solely to garage motor vehicles and to store personal property. Number six, the proposed garage shall not be used for any business or commercial activities, and shall not be used for residential dwelling purposes. Number seven, running water to and within the proposed garage is prohibited. Number eight, electricity services within the proposed garage shall be restricted to single-phase electrical, electric service. Number nine, spotlights on the proposed garage and pole lights on the subject property that lead to or are outside the proposed garage are prohibited. Number six, the proposed garage shall not be used for any business or commercial activities, and shall not be used for residential dwelling purposes. Number seven, running water to and within the proposed garage is prohibited. Number eight, electricity services within the proposed garage shall be restricted to single-phase electrical, electric service. Number nine, spotlights on the proposed garage and pole lights on the subject property that lead to or are outside the proposed garage are prohibited. Storage of combust, number 10, storage of combustible or hazardous materials within or outside the proposed garage, including gasoline and used motor oil in excess of five gallons, is prohibited.
I have one more.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, removal of that shed.
Good, yes.
Uh, I do have a question. Um, so I, I was looking through all my stuff today, and I realized, um, when we laid the stakes out, it's supposed to be 24 by 40, and when he plotted it out, it's supposed to be, he put 24.6 by 39.5. I reached out to the gentleman today, but he didn't get back to me. So is it there, is there going to be an issue, because you said I can't exceed 39.5, but it's going to be a...
You think it'll be 40 instead of 39.5?
It's going to be 24 by 40, per the, per the plans, not, he, I didn't realize that the plot plan says 24 by 6 by 39.5 until about 6:00 AM this morning. And of course, I didn't get the, he didn't return my call, unfortunately.
I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
No, that's, that's a minor...
That's fine.
Well, good, Barney will...
So we'll, we'll modify the conditions to say that the, um, it's, again, the detached one-and-a-half-story garage, dimensions can't exceed 24 by 40, whatever the, I'm not going to figure out the math right now, but...
No, I find, it's less than the square footage than this would have been anyway.
Yep.
So...
Okay, great.
And that's what you had on the original application?
Yes, yes. I didn't know if I would run into technical difficulties down the road. Did you, um, specify that there cannot be a spotlight or spotlight, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Excellent.
Better to ask questions now.
I figured as much, yeah.
Uh, second? You made the motion.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. So we'll draft the decision, hopefully within the next week or two?
Okay.
Draft and sign. Diana will file it with the town clerk, you'll get a copy, you'll be notified. Um, you'll need to file a copy of the decision with the Registry of Deeds in Nor, in, uh, in Dedham.
Okay.
Norfolk County Registry of Deeds. And once you do that, then you can go to the building commissioner to get your, um, building permit.
Perfect.
Okay? Obviously, if you have any questions?
Yep.
You know, let Diana know, or let...
Is there something, something about 20 days you want to make sure you have?
Yeah, there's a 20-day appeal period, I'm sorry. Um, from the time the, um, decision is filed with the town clerk, there's a 20-day appeal period.
From my butters?
Yeah.
Or whoever, okay.
Yeah.
Um, with those restrictions, is that going to come with my decision, so I have it on file, so I can give it to my contractor, whoever, just in case?
Yeah, the, the, um...
Oh, yeah.
The, the decision will include a copy of this, a copy of your, you know, plot plan, and the conditions we built into.
Excellent.
And that would be wise to give him a copy, yeah.
Yeah.
I would, like you said, rather be safe than sorry.
This is what I'm living with, so you've got to live with it, too.
Now, you're, even, even though we're talking just a matter of, you know, inches, you probably want to, you know, provide a, um, an updated...
I'm still going to update it, yes.
Plot plan to the, uh, to the building commissioner.
Yes.
Okay?
Sounds good, thank you.
Any, Bill, any other question for him? Okay, great. All right, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Good luck.
You have a good night, good luck. Please. Subdivision of course, in the stop and shop?
Yeah.
Of free, but, yep.
Yep.
You're six feet away, so...
Okay.
Hello.
Hello.
I don't know if he's waving you goodbye, or?
No, I'm waving hello.
You know what?
I wave goodbye and go fly.
Is the fishing pole outside, are you watching it for any bites?
I think he's ignoring it.
Probably is.
Go ahead, Joe, tell us what you want to do.
Okay, um, I submitted a plan that shows the existing foundation on, uh, 2 O'Reilly Lane, which is the house immediately as you enter the roadway on the left-hand side. Um, I was in front of the board a few months back about, uh, 4 O'Reilly, and I showed you a fence outline that the customers were looking for, and we reviewed that. So, um, there is an existing six-foot solid fence between properties.
Mm-hmm.
And what I'm showing here on the plan is just to create some privacy along the street, which would start halfway down the street, um, the street side of the wall, so it's a 36-foot, um, house depth. So the house faces O'Reilly Lane, the side of the house faces Main Street. So I'm showing, uh, a fence starting halfway down the house, uh, coming out to just shy of the sidewalk, and then also on the, uh, on the other side of the house for a, a gate. So there's, basically creating a, a little enclosed, uh, yard area.
So essentially, you're adding what, this?
Correct, that, that, correct.
Is this the one that already exists over here?
We're adding, adding along Main Street, bringing it back to the middle of the house.
Right.
And then adding a little area...
This one over here?
On the other side, just as a, as an entry area. Um, and, you know, just being on the, on Main Street, it, it, uh, you know, you need a little bit of privacy.
And this is essentially the same fence that we approved?
Yes, yes it is, but I, you know, I didn't want to do something without coming to the board.
So...
So, and the split rail is there right now?
Yeah, so a portion of the split rail would come out.
Okay.
And, um, and then that would have to be adjusted so that it matches up with the new six-foot solid. So there, there'd be a portion that would be solid, and then the split rail would continue as it exists.
Is there any, um, so what's on the other side of, of the...
Split rail.
What does the fencing look like on the, on the other side of O'Reilly?
On the other side of O'Reilly.
Okay, but, but on 140?
Yes.
That's split rail, okay.
So it's, we're, we're maintaining the entrance split rail and, and the landscaping, but this does create some privacy for the, uh, Omar.
Now, does this, and I know you're going to say no, but, um, is this going to create any obstruction of the view?
No, that's, that's why, why, uh, I pulled it back.
So?
So that it didn't go all the way out to the front. And there's also, when, and I actually checked that out, when you, when you go out and park and wait, um, for entrance onto the Main Street, there's, there's plenty of visual in both directions.
Okay. So you thought about that, and that's why you...
Yeah. Yeah, I think it would have been more of a concern if we brought it all the way to the front of the house, uh, but this way, um, I think it'll be fine.
So how many have you sold so far?
Eight.
So you sold all, then?
Yeah. This is the last, uh, this is the last house in it, it sold a few weeks ago.
What, what are you selling them for, Joe?
Um, plus or minus, uh, I think it was on at $4.99, so if people add a few things, it could be, you know, $504, $503, $502.
And, and how much are the affordables going for?
Uh, $2.38. And two, yeah, the two affordables.
And obviously, they're, they're sold, so... I said, obviously, they're sold.
Yes. Yeah, it, it seems that, uh, people seem to be very happy with, uh, what they have.
Yeah. So what is decided, is this is substantial or insubstantial, so?
Oh, yeah, I, I don't think substantial.
No, we've already decided on another one.
Yeah.
So...
I agree.
Okay. Uh, motion?
I guess I move with that we have determined that the modifications to the fence is not substantial.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
The, um, I'll use the word in quotes, issue with the woman that...
Yes.
With the 146 Main Street, or?
Yes.
Has that been resolved, or?
Um, I believe so. Bill and I, uh, discussed it, and I put a memo together for him. I'm not sure what else happened.
Yeah, because she, she initially contacted Paige Duncan.
Yeah.
Paige sent it to me, happened to be on the phone one day with Bill, so I sent it to the building, obviously.
Yeah, so we, we discussed it, I put together a letter for him.
Yeah.
And, um...
So that, one of the butters was complaining about a fence, her fence, which was in pretty good state of disrepair.
Correct.
Or bad state of disrepair. Um, the, the windows, but I think that had already been resolved with, with Nick, and I don't know what else. She seemed to be all over the place.
This is the house with the swimming pool?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the matter has been resolved to the best of everyone's abilities. I don't think, it's one of those where I don't think it ever can be fully resolved because it's going to keep evolving, so at some point, you have to say enough's enough.
Yeah.
And I think Joe has done everything he possibly can, to the point where I'm not getting any complaint, any more complaints, so I think we've come up and came.
He wanted to put decks up, I remember that, and I said, you were going to put some decks out the back doors?
Yeah, no, we kept them as patio.
And I said, yeah, I, I said, to everybody a favor, no decks, because they were all looking, you know, I understood that one, but...
Yeah, and it's an eight-foot fence, so it's a substantial fence.
Some people, if they don't want it, they always don't want it.
Yeah, I actually calculated for Bill that I added an additional 90 feet of the eight-foot fence, a little in both directions, so...
All right, well...
Yeah, when I looked at her email, and then looked at, you know, our decision, I said that there's no non-compliance with the decision, so she's just complaining about...
Right, yeah.
Whatever she wants to complain about, but, you know, fortunately, Mr. Gasparra?
It...
Don't care of it.
I think Joe has done as much as he can, and he's more than enough.
Okay, great, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next time, we'll not have to have minutes.
Hopefully not.
This is tough.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too.
Take care.
Uh, minutes from last meeting, which was ages ago.
January.
I have no changes?
I had no changes.
All in favor?
Was that the meeting I was in, was that the chairman meeting? Yeah, I wasn't there.
Right.
I was on the road board then.
And then, of course, we had the meeting earlier than that in December, which Lorraine came the week after.
Right.
So I'm just saying, I probably not need to vote on it, I don't know if you want me to, I'll vote on it.
I mean, I, any, you, you have no questions in reading it, I have no questions.
No questions, no corrections.
All in favor, opposed? Uh, we're supposed to reorganize?
Yeah, I like the setup now, but...
Okay.
I'm very happy where we are right now.
We're happy, yeah.
Okay, I'll continue. Whether we're happy or not.
I would nominate Mr. Over to be chairman.
Second.
Okay, all.
I'll nominate Mr. Brown to be vice chairman, unless you want to...
Second, no, I'm very happy.
Okay, and we'll both nominate Ms. Mellon to be clerk, I guess, or secretary, I don't think it's clerk.
This year, we're going to figure out a way to have her run a meeting, because we know she's dying for that.
No.
So next month, we're going to have the appeal of Mr. Gasparra's enforcement decision.
Oh, boy.
She finally, she finally gave Diana the, um, butters list.
Yesterday.
Has Bob certified it yet, or?
Yeah, yeah, the, uh, well, no, I have to, um, give it to Bob tomorrow.
Okay.
Today was my day of the impound, so, um, so I'll give it to him in the morning.
So, so where is this at, and kind of, specifically what the issue is?
Um, Judy's Flower...
Judy's Flower has a, uh, trailer out there, so the woman who lives in the house, not, she doesn't even live there, she, who owns the house that's next door, um, asked Bill to take enforcement action and remove it, and, um, Mr. Gasparra wrote a very erudite letter explaining why he would not, uh, take any action, why it's a non-conforming, pre-existing non-conforming use.
Yeah, it's been there forever.
Been there forever, so she's appealing.
All right, so, listen to it, it'll be a fun night.
So you probably won't be here in July, will you, Bill?
I don't know.
You know what, Bill, I think you...
Five years from now, I don't know.
Go off to the Cangamangas and just...
I want to be home in my lounge pants, watching Netflix. I don't know. I'm, I'm, I may show up for it, I probably would, would show up for it. We'll see.
Where, where's your file, where's your file under, is it upstairs, or is Lisa?
Yes, everything, I, I put everything together, Diana, I'll make it available tight for Diana, so I put it all in chronological order, so...
Okay, Diana, I'll grab it from you next time here.
So, I do have a question about the property over there, Bill?
Yes.
So, you know, I never knew it was there till about a month ago, but between the house on, that faces the common, who I guess is the person that's, you know, got a complaint, and the house that's on the street over here, there's this other building.
It's between, it's between the flower shop and, uh, the, the housing authority's house and the O'Rourke property, which has been sold.
So who owns that building? Do you know?
Well, it's just been sold.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's in an estate right now.
Okay.
Everything's in there, Dave, so...
Okay.
You, you know, you're welcome to come in and...
Yeah, I will.
Pretty good to see you, anyway.
There's a building over there.
Come on, on down.
You've got to go look for it real hard, it's so overgrown.
There you go.
Unbelievable. What is this?
But, but she, she's only had that ownership for what, about a year now, or two years?
Yeah, I'm working on something else that might be in front of you.
And I don't...
I'm working it up tomorrow.
Out of there.
Could be another one.
No.
Could be a busy mother.
The healing moon, the healing moon lady wants to change her business for home occupation? You'd have to ask them, but I'm up there.
Has she filed?
I don't know. The, the lady with the healing moon, does she have to come before us for a home occupation?
No, it's hard to, I got, my, uh, my microphone's bad, it's hard to hear.
You guys talk, because your microphones are better. The lady who owns the healing moon...
The lady that owns the healing moon?
She wants to move her business...
The healing, oh, yes, yes.
She wants to move her business for home occupation, is that it?
Correct.
Has she filed anything, or given you an application, or?
She was going to file something, yes, so that, that, yeah, I forgot about that, that may be coming into Diana's next week.
We work for, like, next Friday?
When's the, uh, when's the deadline, Diana?
Uh, is it next Thursday?
All right, so, yeah, that's coming in, she's moving into the house, a home.
Where is this at? Where is the healing moon? Where is it?
She's in that building, where Judy's is.
Uh, the deadline is next Friday.
Next Friday is the deadline.
Next Friday, okay.
Yeah.
And then we, at some point, we'll be getting a wireless communication application. Um, I think I said it in an email, on one of the craft property parking lots. And I would expect it'll come in in July, so probably here in August, unless I get surprised that it comes in next week.
Ernie, so, I know you nominated all the reorg, the non-reorg, but do you need to vote?
So, I, I asked Diana about that on Monday, so everybody was reappointed. Everybody, meaning you, Kurt, and, and Dave, were reappointed. Um, Diana said she spoke with Bob Cutler, and they haven't sent anything out yet, you know, they haven't sent the...
I guess the selectmen have to send something out. So they haven't sent out the reappointment notices yet. They should be coming in the next two weeks. And then, once you get them, you go see Claudine out in the side yard here, and they'll swear you in.
But until such time as you, until such time as the selectmen get that stuff out, you're...
Everybody's considered maintaining on the boards until this happens, because everybody ran out the end of May, I think, when it was...
Congratulations to everybody on their successful reappointments. And that gets us another ride at whatever the state training course is that we love so much, probably, ethics training or whatever.
Well...
Lot of fun.
I'm sure that'll happen, so...
It'll happen, I mean...
Oh, you'll have to spend five minutes on there.
Oh, you show me I can spend five minutes on it, I'd love to know, I, I've got enough I have.
All right, anything else, anybody have? Well, it's good to see everyone. Hopefully, everybody will stay healthy.
Absolutely.
And safe.
Yes.
And must be fun to have your daughters home.
Yes. It is, no, it is, it definitely is. It's not easy to leave campus and come home and live with your parents again, but they've been awesome, so, it's been great.
Are they working this summer?
Yes, which is...
It's unfortunate.
Great, fantastic. One is taking two classes and working, so it's all, it's all good. Are, are we still live?
You can adjourn, and you'll be not live.
Yeah. I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second, all in favor?